I'd like to call the July 16th meeting of the Pitt County Planning Board to order. I welcome all the business in the audience and hope that we give something to y'all tonight that's beneficial. At this time, we'll ask Mr. Brother Frank Rood Bradham if he would give the invitation and Kenny Ross is going to place the lead.
Stand there bud. Let us pray. I dare have a Father, thank you for the blessings that you give us each and every day. Thank you for the blessings of living in this fine county with fine people, made decisions that we render and the recommendations that we make be in your like and your kingdom. In his name we pray. Amen.
We are joining the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll ask for a roll call.
Frank Bradham.
Here.
Jacob Cox. Lyman Hardy.
Here.
Wanda Harrington.
Here.
Thomas Harris.
Here.
Aaron Hines. Clayton Malloy Jr.
Present.
Matt Nobles.
Here.
Johnny Penner.
Good.
Kenneth Ross.
Here.
And William Wooton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we were notified that Jacob Cox and Aaron Hines will not be in attendance tonight.
Thank you. The minutes were mailed out to y'all. Do I have a motion on the floor that we accept?
Second.
Got a motion and second, all in favor, raise your right hand. First thing on the agenda is swearing in. Let's go.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. We have with us tonight a couple of folks from our legal staff. First up, Lisa Overton, I did want to announce, that's been serving as our legal counsel of sorts for the county. She is on her way out. She's moving out of state and will not be with us any longer, but we do have our bona fide county attorney tonight, Janice Gallagher. She's going to take you through a few things that deal with our swearing in as official zoning officers tonight, or zoning officials. And then after that point, as far as the oath, that will be administered by Donna Tripp through the legal office as a notary public. So with that, Janice.
Terrific. Good evening, thank you for having me tonight again. Janice Gallagher, the county attorney, here in Lisa Overton's shoes. And tonight, just wanted to talk to you for a quick minute about why we're administering the oaths, and then we'll go ahead and get those administered and you can go on with the rest of your meeting. But as we proceed, and I got it on here too, so we have three planning staff members who will be responsible for zoning and code enforcement, and their position will be as a code zoning compliance official. And in that capacity, they are considered a public official. In the legal realm of government work, there is immunity that is provided for honest acts and work done within the course of your official governmental functions. And when considering whether or not a public official is immune, one of the things that sometimes courts will look to is whether or not they've taken an oath of office, whether or not their office is prescribed by statute, which these are, and whether or not there's been an oath. So in order to be sure we have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed, this evening, we'll go ahead and administer that oath for these three officials as they carry out their official duties. And there were some PowerPoint slides presented for you that we can briefly go through, although there's a glare on this, that describes for you what a public official is, and that these public officials are carrying out a certain degree of discretion within the course of their regular duties. That as a sworn official, they are immune from personal liability for acts honestly conducted in the course of their official duties. Now, there's still liability for those acts which are outside the scope of their duties or improper. We're not, we are protecting them from their best efforts that, as they move forward. And an oath can be administered under the general statutes by any of the folks listed on the screen in front of you, and tonight, we have a notary public to administer those oaths. So with all of that being said, I would invite up James Rhodes, Mark Nottingham, and Eric Gooby to come here, and Donna Tripp to administer their oath confirming their obligation as a public official in their role as a zoning compliance officer.
Place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I.
Aye.
State your name.
James Rhodes.
Do swear that I will well and truly execute.
Do swear that I will well and truly execute.
The duties of the office of zoning compliance officer.
The duties of the office of zoning compliance officer.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janice. Okay, the next matter, James Guganham of the Neuse River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Actually, yes, I will be joining in with Landon on this particular item. We have Landon Holland with Holland Consulting Firm. You've been briefed on this a few times before. Pitt County is serving as the lead planning agency for a five-county hazard mitigation plan that's being developed now. Landon will go through a number of things that we'll be working towards over the next few months, and one of the big things to remember is certainly a very important plan for Pitt County and all the municipalities within the county. Without this plan, we're not eligible for disaster relief funds through the federal government. So our current plan, which is a five-year plan, will actually expire next July. So our full intent here is to ensure that we get another plan in place before July of next year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Landon to bring you up to date on where we are in this process, and we basically have a draft plan that's now ready for review over the next couple of months, and we'll be soliciting all the input we can from the public and any that you might have. So with that, I'll bring Landon forward.
Oh, here, here we go. Okay. Yeah, as James mentioned, we are here tonight to talk about the Neuse River Basin Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Technically speaking, this is a new plan. You could call it an update since the county has operated under several iterations of their former plan, but this is essentially considered a new document since we are folding in to a regional effort involving the five-county area. Tonight, I just, I won't read through this, but we're just going to hit on a couple of things, explain to you why we're doing this, what the implications are for the county, give you a brief overview of the planning process and how we're going to close out the project. In terms of hazard mitigation, it was, this program and this effort was established back in 1998 by the state of North Carolina and 2000 by the federal government, and strictly stated in the Code of Federal Regulations, hazard mitigation is any action taken to reduce or eliminate the long-term risk to human life and property from natural hazards. So basically, we're trying to plan for disasters and minimize and eliminate risk where possible. So when we talk about what is hazard mitigation planning, the actual planning process, the effort, what's involved in the plan itself, we are, as I said, it's a process undertaken before the disaster strikes, so we're trying to look at where there are vulnerable properties, where people are at risk, and look at methods and ways to reduce or eliminate that risk. Through the plan, we provide guidance to decision-makers in the form of, in terms of applying for grants, as well as capital improvements efforts, capital improvement efforts that may reduce risk to infrastructure or facilities associated with emergency management in response to disasters. It does show a commitment on the part of the local unit of government in terms of dealing with these types of situations, and as James mentioned, it is tied directly to public assistance funding and in some ways, the community rating system. I won't get into the community rating system in too much detail tonight, other than to say, it is a program that provides for a reduction in flood insurance rates for individuals living within the flood hazard area. So it does reduce that rate by a percentage, depending on what your rating is in that program. I would just guide you to the actual document, and there's a further overview of the CRS program. But the actual public assistance funding, what we're talking about is post-disaster cleanup, so getting debris out of the streets, that is all, those costs are reimbursable to the local unit of government, as well as annual hazard mitigation grant funding. So for instance, a county has this year applied to acquire a structure or buyout of a structure similar to what happened following Floyd. All of those funding opportunities would not be available if this plan were not maintained and updated on a five-year cycle. When we talk about this actual planning grant, it was funded in a 75 federal, 25-state funding scenario through monies available following, remnant monies from Hurricane Isabel several years ago. NCEM did initiate the grant proposal and essentially established the region. Pitt agreed to join into that region and in turn, decided to act as lead agency. Some of the reasons, one of the primary and main reasons for doing that was that Pitt County is the first county to expire in the five-county area, and Pitt County obviously has an interest in making sure that this plan is completed, adopted, certified ahead of that expiration date. So, you know, Pitt acts as a lead, essentially that means the funding flows through Pitt and that they have been involved in the contracting process as well as oversight through development of the plan. When we talk about the plan and the planning process and schedule, this gives you a brief rundown of where we've been, where we're headed. We initiated our regional MAC meeting, so in terms of the planning process, we've maintained a regional MAC or mitigation advisory committee, basically a steering committee. So the regional steering committee involves EM, EM personnel, planning, department staff, and some managers of some of our smaller units of government. And we also maintain a county MAC. So in Pitt County, we have our own, the Pitt County has our own steering committee as well as the other five counties, and on the other slide, I don't think I mentioned, those are Pitt, Wayne, Green, Jones, and Lenore Counties. So we maintain a steering committee in each individual county and at the regional level as well. So from December through July, today, actually, we had our last Pitt County Steering Committee meeting. We've drafted the plan, basically, as James alluded to, the draft plan is essentially now complete. I'll get into that briefly here in a moment. From January through April, we worked on regional strategy development, and in July, moving into the beginning of August, we will finalize this draft plan. And at this point, what we're asking is that the regional partners, the staff, elected officials, planning board members within the five-county region, review the document and provide comment and feedback as need be, so that we can make sure that the interest of the county, the municipalities involved are represented accurately and appropriately in the document. So once we have that review complete, which we will say it'll be early to mid-September, we will submit the plan to North Carolina Emergency Management. There is a 90-day review period, 45 days for NCEM, and 45 days for FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. Subsequent to that review, we will get a notification that we can proceed with adoption, and at that point in time, we're hoping during, right at the turn of the year, January into February, Pitt County will be, as well as the participating municipalities, will be in a position to move forward with adoption. So once the plan is adopted, we will move into implementation, and implementation of this plan theoretically, we'll say, will be July through 2015, and then in July 2020, another five-year update will be required. I do want to hit briefly, I'm not, I will not read these strategies, you can see them on the screen, glance through them. Main point I wanted to bring up here is that the strategies do focus on different, or there are various focus areas that we look at when we develop the strategies. As you can see, and this initial strategy is focused on making sure that any land use decisions, zoning decisions, and you know, in turn, land use plan amendments and decisions or decisions on location of facilities do take this plan and the information in this document into account. The plan speaks to the issue of maintaining up-to-date flood damage prevention ordinance regulations. County obviously has just gone through a round of updates, so we speak to that at length in the document. We also get into some emergency management issues and concerns. For instance, this first strategy here, as you can see, speaks to the fact that the county will maintain their emergency notification system, and you know, this system is, it does require registration of cell phones, so if you don't have a landline, you have to go on and register so that you receive these emergency notifications. So we speak in the plan about advertising that fact and getting the word out that individuals do need to go register their numbers so that in the event of a tornado or other natural hazard event, they are notified through their, directly through their cellphone. We speak to sheltering, the issue of sheltering, not only within the county, but throughout the region. There are several documents in place that address the issue of regional sheltering. So in terms of it being a five-county plan, we had the ability to not only discuss this issue within Pitt County, but also within the five-county area. And lastly, these last two, the, you know, we do have strategies, as I stated, relating to the CRS program or Community Rating System program. There are a lot of public outreach elements to that program, and we speak to that in this document, and this document actually provides points that increase the counties or will assist the county in securing points that will work towards that reduction in flood insurance cost. And lastly, you know, one of, another, these are six strategies, there's roughly 20 in the plan. We speak to the county's emergency operations plan and the need for the county to maintain that plan and coordinate all elements of that plan with the municipalities throughout the county. When we talk about the actual draft plan and the review process, there is a website that is in place. That, the URL for that website is www.nuseverregionalhmp.org. This is a screenshot of that website. As of today, as of this meeting, the full draft plan minus one minor section, which we will have up by Monday, is on, is on the site for review. This is how it looks, so it's all on one page, so there's seven sections. We have a tab here for each section. You can go in there, review it section by section. Additionally, the maps you see around the room for each county are also on the website, and there is a comment box on the website that would allow for anyone that reviews it to provide direct comments back to us if you see a concern or an issue that's not addressed, or just simply would like for us to contact you directly to discuss any issues or elements of the document. You can do so directly from this site. So we're hoping that this provides for a very efficient, easy means of reviewing the document and will not restrict the ability to review the document to staff or individuals that have access to a hard copy. So we really hope that this will be an effective way of moving through the review process. And with that, I would, can, will be happy to answer any questions you have. From this point, we are going to hold one more public input opportunity in Wayne County over the next month, and we will be holding one more regional mitigation advisory committee meeting prior to submitting this plan for review to the state. But we are trying, we are really wrapping the process up and appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about it, and as I said, we have plenty of time to review it, comment, make any necessary edits as, as identified by the planning board or any other entities throughout the county.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for him? Did you say we will get this in September?
Well, the plan is up for review on the website now, so we, we would ask, you know, it would be great if everyone would take the opportunity over the next month to go through and review it and look through it so that we can get as many of, you know, issues addressed prior to submitting it to NCEM. Now, in terms of it coming before you for actual, for action, we're looking at probably mid-January, roughly, well, January to February, I would say, is when it will be before the planning board for formal action in terms of sending it on to the commissioners for consideration.
All right. Thank you. Anybody? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
James?
Yeah, just to clarify that a little bit, we'll probably bring it back and actually hold possibly a public hearing at this level, again, give an opportunity for additional input, and that would also give you an opportunity to hear that input, we'd bring together any comments that we've received, and by that time, we would already know, you know, what if any changes the state or the federal government's requiring on that. Also, Mr. Chairman, did want to recognize a couple of folks that are in the audience tonight that have been instrumental in getting it to this point, too. We have Alex Alden that's with our eastern branch of emergency management. He's a state official that's kind of helped lead us through this process and also has helped coordinate bringing some of the representatives from the other counties, and we also have our emergency management director, Noel Lee, that's also been involved in this process. So you'll be hearing more about this probably early next year. Do welcome you to go online to the website if you have any questions, any comments, please put them in there and we'll make sure they get addressed. Thank you.
Are you going to do the rezoning request?
No, sir, Mark is up for that.
All right, okay.
All right, good afternoon, everybody.
Good.
So we have a request by Alex Pinestraw and Mulch LLC to rezone 1.181 acres located on State Road 1725, that's County Home Road. It's just north of his intersection with Ellison Court, and that's a private road. It's parcel number 524, and the request is to rezone from rural residential to general commercial conditional district. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. And this is a view of the property looking from County Home Road. It would take up of the four manufactured homes, the first four that you see on the left. This is adjacent to the proposed rezoning site. This is the current operation of the Pinestraw Sales. And this the view looking down Ellison Court with the subject property on the left. This is across County Home Road, and another view across County Home Road from the subject property. This the subject property on the right, looking back north along County Home Road, and looking south towards Worthington's Crossroads. It's existing commercial uses, that grill at Worthington's Crossroads, and across from that is the car lot. Our comprehensive land use plan, future land use map designates this as commercial crossroad community. And this designation is intended to include a mix of residential, public institutional, and commercial uses. Residential uses can be located near non-residential uses with appropriate buffers, and this category is designated at prominent crossroads locations where existing commercial development provides goods and services to a larger surrounding population. This our existing land use map, you can see the subject property is in residential area, a lot of undeveloped farmland around it, and some commercial interspersed around there as well. Our current zoning map, you can see is largely rural residential with the general commercial designated at Worthington's Crossroads. The general commercial district is to, intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. This request is also a conditional district request. It's for the, specifically for the sales of Pinestraw Mulch and landscaping services. I know there was a site plan in your packet, but this enlarged version, you can see they have five parking spaces that will front County Home Road. The mulch bins will, will be farther towards the back. One proposed 24-by-24 office building and screening on, back toward, that would buffer between the remaining residential and the manufactured home park and the residentially-zoned parcel on the other side. Given the subject property's proximity to similarly-zoned property, its classification is commercial crossroads in our comprehensive land use plan, as well as having road frontage along County Home Road, the request is in general conformance with the land use plan, and this site meets guidelines for the general commercial conditional district in our zoning ordinance. So we request or recommend approval of the request by Alex Pinestraw Mulch to rezone 1.81 acres located on the corner of State Road 1725, County Home Road, and Ellison Court, parcel number 524, from rural residential to general commercial conditional district. And we also recommend that prior to the Board of Commissioners' public hearing regarding this request, the applicant should submit written permission from the landowner allowing the future associated business traffic that would travel on Ellison Court, which is a private road, give them permission to use that street within the existing manufactured home park. And we advise that the request is reasonable and within the public interest and is consistent with the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan and other applicable plans. As just to outline in the rezoning process, we'll now entertain public comments. The planning board will then make a recommendation to the commissioners, and the commissioners are scheduled to hold a hearing regarding this request on August 18th. At that time, they'll take action. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or you can open up for the public comments.
Anybody for Mark?
Mark, all these driveways, you're going to have two driveways on Ellis Road, so it won't be a driveway out there on County Home Road, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, how about those separate tanks on those, that piece of land?
The, the separate tanks were going to be, have to be abandoned, removed.
Okay.
And they may have to put in a single drain line if there's, there's going to be required a handicap accessible bathroom and the proposed, proposed office. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. At this time, we are looking at the floor for public comment. We don't have, we have one signed up to talk, and that's Mike Baldwin. Mike, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. I'm Mike Baldwin, and I represent Alex Pinestraw Mulch LLC. I've always told my two boys, you can be successful at anything if you work hard enough. And that's exactly what these folks have done. They've been selling pine straw out there for, for 10 years now, and they've done well at it. It's branched on to people wanting mulch and a, a landscaping business as well. The, as Marcus said, the request is compliant with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It is a conditional use request, so is, there is safe holds on what we're asking to do is pine straw sales, mulch scales, sales, and a landscaping business. I would view those as very non-offensive uses in this area. I went out before the meeting today, and it's exactly two I went out before the meeting today, and it's exactly two tenths of a mile north of Worthington's Crossroads, so it does fit, as Mark has alluded to, in that little commercial node that you have there at Worthington's Crossroads. I will further add that Ms. Joanna Portillo, who is the manager of Alex Pinestraw, and I presume that's Alex's wife, but they have under contract with Ms. Ludi Moore, who owns these, this part, the entire parcel of land, to purchase the, the mobile home park contingent upon the, the rezoning goes through. So, you know, these are not somebody who just wants to get a little area and do their own thing. They, they want to show a vested interest in having the, the mobile home park under ownership as well. Other than that, I've, in, in trying to screen the, the adjoining properties, on the north line, there's an existing hedgerow. However, that hedgerow, the type of trees in there, does lose its leaves in the wintertime, so I've put, placed Leyland cypresses along that, and there are no trees between where this would be and the mobile home behind it to the east. I've placed Leyland cypresses, and that is a condition of this plan. Maybe the only thing I would ask for, if there's any leeway that could be given, is the, the size of the, the office. I've got it twenty-four by twenty-four. There's not gonna be a lot of need for, for an office. I don't know how particular you get, maybe if we could do sixteen by sixteen. And the reason I say sixteen, that's about your maximum board length. You can build a lot, build a building a lot cheaper for sixteen by sixteen than you can twenty-four by twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
And I'm, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody got any questions with Mike? I forgot to tell you about three minutes.
No, that's fine. I squeaked it out, I think, or close enough, anyway.
He developed enough, he knows. Yeah. I, I don't have anybody else signed up to speak, but before we close the board for public hearing, is anybody else out there like to say anything? If so, come forward and state your name. All right, at this time, oh, Mark, at this time, we'll close the floor for public comment and turn it over to the board for comment.
Well, I went out there Monday, and like Mark said, you know, you got commercial right down there, right, right below it, and it fits in the plan according to the zoning regulations, and I would make a motion that we would approve it.
Excuse me just a minute, is that motion with the change in the, instead of twenty-four by twenty-four to sixteen to sixteen office?
The office has concerns, it's really.
It does.
The office doesn't concern us, it's just a property.
James, that, Mark, is that, that's not under?
I would believe we consider that a minor deviation that we can grant on a staff level when they submit their building plans.
All right. We got a motion on the floor. Do we accept the proposed rezoning? Got a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
James?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple items, and the first one was something that the board had requested that staff look into at our last meeting, and I think it was Mr. Harris that said there'd been a number of accidents at the intersection of NC two-twenty-two and Old River Road on the north side of the Tar River. And the request, I think, that came from the board was to look into a fullway stop sign being, stationed at that particular location. When we contacted DOT, they had advised us they'd already studied the site, and in turn, had already had a design of sorts as to what they felt like would make this a safer intersection. And on the screen, you can see kind of what the proposal here is. This is your intersection with NC two-twenty-two running north-south, Old River Road east-west, in this depiction, anyway. And what they're proposing are two concrete medians and retaining the stop condition on Old River Road as it approaches two-twenty-two. So on either side, on the Old River Road segment, you'll see a raised concrete median, a more obvious stop sign condition there, and that's what they're base, you know, based on their study of that intersection, they're proposing. Not in place yet, they're seeking funding right now, so hopefully that'll be out there within the next year. So I will ask our friends north of the river to keep us posted on what they see there and when it might go into place, but if there are other issues, you see other concerns there, we've got a contact with DOT that's pretty much designed this and plans to put it in place next year.
James, I would like to thank you for your fast action because I think we asked for it, and within two days, you had emails out that you had already looked into it, so.
Appreciate that. This was an easy one because they had already done the study, so hopefully things will be in place fairly soon.
James?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you one question. Do they have a, a warning sign down the road that stop ahead on that intersection or not? Do you know?
Tommy, Clay?
Some places have these, and I think that helps out a lot, I mean.
We will make that suggestion to them. You should know you're through there all the time, too.
Yeah.
None?
There are not any warning signs, I can tell you for sure.
Okay. We will check into that.
He says stop.
Yeah. I had that bill wanted to go down.
Okay, other follow-up items, we've had some other zoning issues and planning issues that have been through the commissioners over the past couple of months since we've met. Ranshorn Solar Center, conditional use permit extension. You might recall, we've had another solar farm that's been proposed. This was probably one of our first ones out on Witcher Road, yet to be constructed, but they did get a, an extension request approved through the commissioners. Something that was pretty quick is the Glan, Glendon Forest Equity rezoning right there in downtown Belvoir. And if you've been by there lately, you've probably already seen some construction going on for a new store there. We've also received funding for a single-family rehabilitation loan pool application that we submitted to Housing Finance at the tune of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars that'll help us repair between three and four homes in the community. If you saw the paper this morning, the Town of Grimeson Solar Farm didn't quite fare as well as the ones that we've had come through our review process. You may know that planning staff for the county actually serves as the zoning administrators for the Town of Grimeson. Eric Gooby in particular has been working with the Board of Adjustment there with that particular request, and that one did not pass last night. So if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer those. Eric's here. In your package, you also have our monthly reports for the last couple of months, some other articles. And with that, Mr. Chairman, just one more plug, if you do have a chance to go on the website for the hazard mitigation plan, and this is for the public at large as well, please do so and give us any comments you may have. But that's all we have for tonight.
Anything else on the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to thank Mr. Ed Dennis Jr., who is gonna run on an unaffiliated ticket, party for District Two. He come out and not take interest in the meeting, and I appreciate him coming out. Mr. Ed Dennis Jr. out there in the audience, so I appreciate him coming. I wish him luck, and also Mr. Kenneth Frost for District Six, for County Commissioner, I wish him luck, too.
Anything else? I made a mistake when I opened the meeting tonight when I said that Frank Wooten was going to say that. I won't be apologized, but one of them appreciated another one that made mad, so.
The only recourse is I, I did have an uncle years ago, he, he, his name is Frank.
Anything else with meeting adjourned?